All right.
Oh, come on, come to our side, to our side, the light side.
We are live.
All right.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Six thirty-three, let's get started and start with our pledges to the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the banner for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
She looks like crazy in here on there. Is that helping with the wifi?
Yeah, yes, I guess it is, depending on what I did last night.
Did you do anything different, or is it?
Well, I got the extender, it's plugged in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, it did help me.
It's like a little bug on its back.
All right, we have roll call. Commissioner Heinemeier.
Here.
Commissioner Ignoship.
Here.
Mayor Nolan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, I'll be waiting to order. Um, announcements, uh, a few, here's a check report. Um, we have... See, so there were several, uh, items from, um, wix.com, which is, um, our, um, website builder. And they're going through a, uh, change of their packages, and so they're, you know, so, um, it's doing a renew, renew them as it's forcing me to. And so some of them include mailboxes, um, some it's just domain. I tried to go through the invoices and, and make sure that I have everything here. Um, I also updated the, um, Fall Festival website to premium so that we could get that up and, up and running again. So it's out there. Um, I've updated, I think I sent you an email through the site. Okay, did you get it? Okay. Uh, make sure that was working. Um, and, uh, let's see. So, a lot of, so it normally wouldn't have, some of it was not updated till October. So some of it, but because they're renewing their plans, or they're changing their plans. So some of it, it fell in September, so our, uh, technology, we went over our normal technology budget, but that's because it would've, would've been in October, not this month, so. Uh, let's see. Uh, nothing much else too. Again, Gazette, that was for the public hearing notice in the paper. Um, thirty-four hundred from sales tax receipts. Um, Jessica had, uh, signed the mixed beverage, uh, uh, license permit request from what is now Big Easy's, uh, which was Marshall's.
They download their same orders?
No, they, they sold it several times, so it's still where you can get all your music downloads. And, uh, so at some point, uh, once that's through and they can start selling liquor, then we will be getting, once again, uh, mixed beverage sales tax receipt. Uh, which never amounted to a whole lot, but, you know, it's, it's...
I save all my nickels and dimes.
So, yeah, it, it's a little bit there. Uh, Bernard Donegan, that was for mine and Frank's bonds. So they are renewed again for another year. I think with your bond, I think we did it for a three-year.
Didn't we do it the same time Nelda's or something?
Something like that, so I think it was for a three-year. So I think you're good, um, for that. Um, and then, of course, with our, um, Texas class, uh, interest continues to go up, which is not a, not a bad thing. So, um, hundred, or five hundred and fifty-one dollars, um, and another hundred and sixty dollars in interest on those accounts.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Um, you said did Nelda and Allison have three-year length of bond?
I don't know, didn't, did Nelda have to have a bond?
I think she should have. Yeah, because she's a city official and she deals with money, so she's...
So my question was, does Jessica have a bond? Has she bonded yet?
This is for insurance.
It's a surety bond.
Ensuring that you don't steal our city money.
Yeah, yes, good point. Oh, we need to get that.
And if we had a three-year on Nelda, if she gets a kind of refund on it because she's no longer employed here.
Yeah.
And, uh, maybe just switch it over to Jessica.
Yeah, okay.
So is that, is that for any city clerk?
It's not, uh, no, missions and errors and...
It's in case somebody runs off Vegas with the money, I guess.
Yeah.
Little bankrupt the city.
Or if we, it's, isn't there like a mission for the errors? Something like that, elected official bond.
It's, it's just a little bit of insurance for the correct public money.
Yeah, it's fifty dollars a year.
I don't think they, they send a bounty hunter out looking for you.
Yeah.
Well, I googled and read a little about becoming a notary, and there's a surety bond involved in that too.
Oh, yeah, well, that would make sense because Nelda was a notary too.
Nolan, will that cover what's saying?
I don't know.
You can find it.
Yeah, I have to read mine, mine is...
My cover, us and yours.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, my notary commission is up October thirty-first, so I have to read mine. Okay.
So the city clerk, but, but it's also, um, the same for the city commissioners are all bonded. It's not just...
Yeah, it's like an elected official bond or a surety bond.
But the city clerk is specifically required to be bonded now.
Yeah. Okay.
The news is you don't have to pay the premium.
No.
All right.
That is your tax, your one, thank you. Not today.
I got announcements.
Okay.
Fall harvest just arrived.
Yay.
Um, we haven't put the sign up yet because it just hasn't happened yet. But also the sign from the barbecue still hasn't come down yet. Yeah, but that will happen. I was planning on it happening today, but it didn't happen quite yesterday. Um, but we do need to start having meetings, and especially because you are also a fall harvest person, and we are not allowed to hang out or talk unless it's official. So I'm just wondering if we should schedule some official meetings while we're all sitting here. Um, yeah, so... Uh, November eleventh?
Eleventh.
Uh, yeah, for fall harvest? Yeah, um, so, I don't know if we should figure that out now, or, or...
Yeah.
When's good to meet?
Whenever.
And Christine would be good to get to, um, well... Uh, does anybody else want to come to these meetings? Anybody got an opinion?
I'll be there.
All right.
Wait, you just tell me when you want to do it.
When do we want to do it?
We should start.
I just...
We should start, um, I'm available.
Weekdays or weekends?
I think weekdays are a little easier to control, because weekends maybe...
Mine are just as, bad as the others, so...
I'm just, I'm asking, you know, what's the best test for either, is anybody not comfortable with the weekday? Is there any particular weekday that's better for somebody than all the others?
I'm good.
Are you up for the point?
Uh, well, Thursday's probably not good if we're gonna do it here, um, because of fire.
That's right.
So Wednesday, Monday, yeah? I mean, I think we should have one this month, so maybe next Monday, or fourth Monday, or, I don't know.
Yeah, fourth Monday.
Yeah, goes down for fourth Monday? Okay, let's do fourth Monday.
So that would be Monday, at least first one, Monday, the, what is today, eighteen, what is it, twenty-fifth?
Mm-hmm, yes. Or is it the twenty-sixth? Um, do you think we could put it on the newsletter, Shirley?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Six thirty, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, six thirty sounds good. Um, and then while we're on the subject of this, I know we are going to be going over the budget, but I thought, um, since we do have a budget for, for Kingsbury for the fall harvest, maybe we could just use that for porta-potties, and then you could just maybe take care of that directly, or you, or somebody who has access to money, which is a suggestion. We can discuss this at the, at the meeting, or the budget.
Okay, speaking of fall harvest, November eleventh is also Veterans Day.
Yes.
Trail riders wanted to do a commemoration observance, uh, at eleven o'clock, which is, it was the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of eleven month when the, I think that was real...
Harvest Day, World War One.
And, uh, so, which is like when everybody's setting up and everything, and I was talking to them about the logistics, and I'm like, you know, we'll figure something.
Well, I was, she was talking to me about it too, and I was just like, oh, good lord, that's when chaos, all hell's breaking loose down there. So do we want to open the fall harvest at eleven? I mean, or do we do something at the front of the street, or, I don't know.
I'm not sure.
What's the trail riders' party?
It's, yeah, they'll have...
They want to give a, present a flag to the mayor.
Yeah, well, it's kind of a, an observance, a Veterans Day observance, um...
Be nice to kick off the fall harvest.
Yeah, I know, so, um...
The trail riders are gonna...
Not the, not Mesquite, it's the Alamo.
Yeah.
I think it's the Alamo Trail Riders.
Yeah, they're spending nine-dollar property, so I'm gonna make them eventually.
Because of the fly-in, so they can't stay at the, uh, the... So, yeah, so you do, you, you know about all of that. So we'll, we'll figure something out for that, you know?
I totally opened to starting it earlier, I mean, it might be the best way, because it's such a complete nightmare an hour before open. Because everybody brings their cars in and then forget where, they just run off.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Idling, lots of cars behind, blocking around the street.
Um, uh, October, the first Tuesday, which I believe is October third, National Night Out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the Texas National Night Out. Um, so I heard from the sheriff's department today, he was checking on the banners. Uh, the banner order apparently did not get made. I said, that's okay, I have an old banner that we revamped, so I'll, I'll be putting that up. So, um, they're gonna get, you know, some sheriffs out there, and so, well, we have some money in the budget for National Night Out, so I'll, uh, try and work up some, some, uh, stuff, and activities, and food, and drink, and stuff for October, which is like a couple of weeks.
We'll say the planning and zoning committee wants to have a little table, information table set up like that.
Perfect, perfect, yeah.
Ducks in a row on that.
Yes, perfect. And I, I think last year I had like the crime report for our area, which I think people found really interesting. So, um, we'll, I'll, I'll make sure I have that again, and, uh, some activities and stuff.
Also the trunker treat, is that going on?
We have two trunker treats.
Two?
Yes, so we're having one on a, the Saturday before Halloween, because it's Saturday, and that's when the Jeep club can be there. And the Jeep club really loves Kingsbury. They love coming with their Jeeps, and they light them all up and do that whole thing. So that is Saturday. Then on actual Halloween night, um, there is another trunker treat. So, you know, kids don't care, they're like, you know, one or the other or both. And that's where we're having, um, the fire department is gonna bring some trucks, and we'll be doing trunk or treat.
What is it, is it on a Wednesday or something like that?
So, yeah, so we're end up having, uh, two trunker treats. It's just the way it worked out because of Saturday and, and, uh, trick or treat falling on a, on a weeknight. So, um, uh, let's see, we're October, gosh, here we go, October thirty-first is on a Tuesday. So we're having one on the twenty-eighth and one on the thirty-first.
All right, uh, the Jeep clubs have a name, formal name, or do you know?
I believe they do, but I don't know what it is.
Who can I contact to find out?
Christine would know.
Okay.
So you can call the store.
And who's actually sponsoring the night of?
The trick or treat, the trunk or treat?
Fire Department or?
Oh, the night of, no, um, we have some flyers up, what, her, her name is Ma... Um, we, we need to go ahead and do like special event permit, you know, just so we can go through the, you know?
Yeah, I guess.
Well, I don't, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea.
It'd be a good, good, good run, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think so too.
We can adjust as we go.
Yeah.
If we need to.
Yeah.
I think we nailed it.
I think we did. Uh, oh, uh, yeah, what is, her name is, I'm sorry, did I...
That's okay.
I'm sorry, person. Um, uh, that, this is, ah, shoot, 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 shoot. Okay, I, I, I know her name, I know her when I see her.
Or is she advertising, or is she advertising?
She has some flyers up at the store.
Okay, I'll just, I'll add them there.
Yeah. And that's all I have for announcements. Anything else, anybody else?
I think I, I was part of a comment, public comment question?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if this is, if it's not an announcement, so, you wanna do public comments?
No, go ahead.
Uh, here, okay, anybody that has the knowledge, because I don't. I don't, I'm not looking for them, so I don't know if they're everywhere else, but down Gander Slue, there's a sort of survey stake things, and they're either two or three stakes with ribbon, survey tape surrounding them. And what's written on them makes no sense to me, it's in code, I guess. But every so often, there's one on either side of the road, but it goes down Gander Slue, and it turns a corner at Oilfield, and goes down Gander Slue some more, uh, for about a mile, maybe. I just don't know what they are, that's what, if anybody else knew.
Is it in the right of way, or?
It's in the right of way, yes, it's before the private fence, it's this side of the private fence.
So it could be a utility.
It's what it looks like, but it's, it's like I said, it's, it's fiber.
Was fiber?
Two, usually it's three stakes, and they wrap a band of, you know, survey tape around it. Well, that's what I think, fiber's coming down like Gander Slue already.
I don't know, they're, they're in...
They already put it on ninety.
Yeah.
They put it, they got it to our place already.
We have it, we're supposed to have it by the end of this month, like at the build, the downtown.
They already came onto our property way down there, they're probably not here.
Estimated date was September twenty-ninth.
And there's also, there's also a switching, uh, because they're running there on Gander Slue, uh, power line, not just the fiber optic, but power line. Infrastructure is being, it's a lot, the amount of sales out there, split properties like down Gander Slue, or, how do you say it? So I know that there is actual power line, not just fiber optic, near, near power line.
I don't know.
Oh, because...
And it's so, do you know what it, what the codes, what it said on it?
I, let me see, maybe, if it's recent, if it was, is it not recent?
I didn't notice it might go down Gander Slue, but there's so much to one hundred and...
Yeah, I'm not sure why, what, three sticks, that sounds utility-ish.
Yeah, uh, Gander Slue, uh...
Well, I can't...
Did they divide it all up?
That's...
A lot of it, yes.
Well, I don't know where they're...
Homes in there, and double wires and stuff, so...
Running, I can see running utilities across, not off, off the street. Maybe we got Bluebonnet, I mean, Bluebonnet, GVC, and, uh, I can't think of the other name of the company. A, A, A some, Texas, A-Tex or something.
Sorry, don't remember who you guys said.
But there's three power companies that are running the power lines like Gander Slue.
Power to his property without block.
A P.
The utility right of way is open and broad, it's, it's a, yeah, and that's the case.
Yeah, it's Bluebonnet back there, right? Are you on Bluebonnet?
Well, I'm on Bluebonnet, but right there, Jones Road, that's AP.
Yeah, AP.
Or, not Jones necessarily, but on Puli Road is AP.
Uh-huh.
Uh, when you turn the corner, uh, and then GVC comes up, I think GVC comes up almost to Withrow Center? Do you GVC elected, you're on Bluebonnet?
Yeah, I mean, right, my property is half Bluebonnet, half GVC, so it's right there, kind of by the church.
They all kind of come together in our area and stuff, but I, I don't know, I just...
I do not know what those are.
See, most of...
If you see anybody working on them, I'd...
Yeah, if I saw, if I saw you about it.
I talked to the workers, they all were, I find that...
Yeah, that's how I know.
It's like, mostly it's three stakes, and they're, I don't know.
But it's fiber.
Okay, I, I would hope so.
Mm-hmm.
I would hope so, that'd be, I mean, that'd be okay.
I don't really notice that.
Yeah, we looked at the prices on the fiber, at least for business, we're down...
Take a shovel and dig it up, see what it is.
Proud of it.
They just, they just mark it, they didn't, they didn't put anything in the ground.
Two twenty for, yeah, for like, not that fast.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Two hundred and twenty, business rate.
For business rate, yeah, so it, my business will probably stay.
Maybe I don't care if they come or not, yeah.
Well, I think for residential, it was a lot cheaper.
I need them, I need them seventy.
It was definitely a lot cheaper than that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it was, I want to say it was like seventy-five for five hundred, which you're paying seventy for five hundred on the...
Yeah.
What's five hundred?
Five hundred megabits per second.
Oh, okay.
Download speed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Better than what we got.
Yeah.
There's nothing better than five G on the right hand, that is the one.
That's what.
I mean, I've, I've been up and down that road for years now, and you can't beat that. For the price, you pay fifty dollars a month, you have unlimited everything, and you have a speed dream, dream about. I'm, I'm uploading one seventy, one eighty megabit per second, and downloading forty, fifty on my place. I mean, I have rarely any cellphone reception like over there.
Yeah.
This is perfect, and I'm super cheap.
Yeah, I love it.
I've, I've, I've tried this Elon Musk, you know, with the Starlink, I had that, too expensive, one thirty-five, uh, the month, it's too expensive. I've been up and down for ten years, not for a decade, but right now, I saw it.
Uh, any problems with, you know, back in the days when it used to rain and...
Nothing, not at all, not at all.
Good, good.
This is, and the price, I mean, you can't beat that, fifty bucks, yeah?
Yeah.
It's usually sixty, like you get ten dollar discount when they make out, this is just awesome.
This is all wireless, I mean...
Yeah, it's a little, little white box, you put in the window, and it connects to a cellphone tower, off you go. And since we have, um, I, I ten, there is the rest stop, on this rest stop, there is a tower.
All right, thank you, I'll take into this.
Yeah, all right.
I usually tell the answer to make, sorry, to make advertisement for this, because I am a firm believer as more people use it, as less data you can download, but this is five G, so five G is supposedly, get that out.
Yeah. Um, all right, uh, item number two, public comments or discussion? Any further comments or discussion from...
I don't know, power source cuts, you see, there's three crews, and everyone's using fiber optic, four G V E C. And you occasionally see a G V E C truck because of that. You also see G V T C doing a lot of, they're staking out, because anytime there's any kind of being, they have college company, yeah, if it's crystal clear, the, the power sources, the ones that run the cables to the fiber optic, and four G V E C.
Yeah.
And I would do an AT&T, something, but I say, it's actually working, who are we actually working for?
Yeah, when I stopped the workers and asked, they were putting the fiber, and he said AT&T, but it's AT&T for G V E C or...
G V T C.
G V T C.
G V E C, I'm sorry, G V E C.
Yeah. All right, item number three, all business, our consent agenda items. Any additions or corrections to the minutes from the August meeting? All right, those will stand. You do great minutes, by the way, Jessica. Thank you. Item number four, at this point, we'll recess our regular commission meeting and call to order our public hearing. Um, the item on that agenda is, do we have an agenda for that one, or it's just part of this one? Okay, um, the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four city budget. So we have had it out for a while. Um, any, so this is a public hearing, so this is where you can make any comments or, oh, I need my glasses for this.
Yes, it's ready.
Public comments or any discussion items, or anything we need to do here? Like I said, as far as the technology, um, if you look, um, we have, uh, on the current budget, we've gone over, but again, that has to do, so I think the technology budget can stay the same. Uh, I do have the note here, as far as our, uh, sales and use tax. You know, we had that, included that, and that's a huge, huge back payment from a local company, so we upped it, but not to the point where it matched what we had this year, because that was a one-time thing. Um, we did not include in here, uh, which we have had before, the mixed beverage taxes. Um, I did not include anything in here because we didn't really know about that until then, and, you know, who knows if that will be, if anything, really.
I recall it, it was, uh, before COVID, before that, the mixed beverage, uh-huh, I thought it was very good.
No, it was, it was just...
Well, considering there's no, you know, I need them so many.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just only for, um, you know, it's like the ice and setups, you know, in a drink is pretty much what gets taxed, I think.
Now, I guess they...
The beer doesn't get taxed, it's just the mixed beverage.
I'm sorry, what were you saying about?
Mixed beverage?
I guess, where, where am I not looking?
Your general fund, um, there's, I've, um, general, your sales tax, and then there's mixed beverage taxes. And I did, like I said, I didn't include anything there because we just don't know what that's going to be. If they even get their, you know, permit approved, who knows?
Street maintenance, anything, nothing for street maintenance? Oh, there's no revenue, I'm sorry, just looking at revenue.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
No, and, and you know, that brings up a, a little point. I'm about to, uh, pour some, uh, cold patch there at, and it's, it's on, not on my property, I guess it's on city property, you know, Eastman County, I don't know whose property, but, um, there between the, the, uh, the hair salon and kind of up closer to the back door of the, of the store on the corner, the old post office, um, uh, for parking along, you know, just for the people going in the hair salon. Because it, you know, if, if in the future it does rain again in our lifetime, that, it gets...
So it's hopeful.
Yeah, it gets, it gets muddy in there, and, you know, there's people trying to, you know? So we're, we're gonna, and so they, they end up parking by the store and blocking my, my door for deliveries, and so we're just gonna go ahead and pour some cold, cold patch, nice, over there. You know, I'm just paying for it.
Well, is it, is it a city street?
Yeah.
City or county?
Or is it an Eastman, a city street? Oh, come on.
I don't know, I really don't. It's not on my property, I know that.
Okay.
In the past, understood it was county.
Yeah, I guess it's county.
Business, it was always county. The county needs, the county needs to do a lot of work, there is.
You're gonna ask county?
Just before.
I could.
We own railway street, don't we? But it's the Kingsbury.
It's, it's on, uh, Kingsbury Road.
Might as well ask county.
I can't.
I'll make it so it's no.
I mean, yeah.
I need to get something done.
Yeah.
It was gonna.
Well, I know, yeah, well, I'm not gonna say don't do that, but we're gonna come up on this sooner or later.
Yeah.
It's gonna come, it's gonna come around sooner or later.
You know, it probably is, yeah.
And start now.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, you know, dirt, dirt there right now, so.
I mean.
I mean, we poured our own sidewalk there.
Just so.
If you're willing to wait. They might tear your sidewalk out.
Yeah. No, well, if at the county, yeah.
Yeah.
I know if I'm paying somebody, they will.
I know.
They've actually poured that sidewalk.
Who did?
I mean, it's been there, like.
No, no, they did an extension.
The new one, the new sidewalk.
Oh, it was the hair house, please.
But I.
Yes.
I say past, uh.
Past tenant there.
Supposedly sidewalk was on what the Dallas tenant, not the owner of the property.
Yeah, there was no sidewalk there.
No, the sidewalk that you extended.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right next, that was still private, the sidewalk itself.
It's not on the property.
It's not on the, it doesn't come up inside the survey stakes?
Nope.
The difference, understanding of this, uh, on the.
There, on the appraisal.
But, you know, the awning doesn't come on the property either, so you just kind of do what you gotta do.
The appraisal district map, it didn't show it as a separate, or does it, do you know?
Uh, on the appraisal district map, what?
Does it show that it's a property that's not on your, not your property? Does it show it as anybody's property?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I know my survey stakes, yes, not my property. I can ask, I can ask.
I guess you, you pour your ass off, and ten years from now, if nobody complains, it's yours. You know, well.
I mean, I'm, I'm shaking my head here right now, you're waking up sleeping bears.
I know, it could be.
Japanese, they, after a hot race, they woke up a sleeping bear.
Yeah. It could be, I need something, though.
Yeah, do it.
I need something, but they're parking in front of, and, and the reason is because it's difficult to get.
There's not room for parking.
Yeah, now, when we put in, it's gonna be five spaces in a handicap, and it's gonna have to be this way. So if they come across the tracks, they're gonna have to go around the block and come that way.
Yeah, so the.
Okay.
What is the time for, three or five years, Sam, your grandfather did?
Yeah.
Uh, uh. What do you call it, Sam?
When, when you, when you do something, uh, in three or five years, your grandfather did.
Oh, uh, like, uh, adverse possession, you acquire it, except that, uh, the question here, I think, is, is that, that's the county's property. Right there next to it, so adverse possession does not run against a county or a city, so you can never acquire it by just taking it over. Uh, the question is, I, it, it could be, well, because right across the street from the, the post office is the county.
Maintenance yard.
Maintenance yard, so that's county property, uh, but then I think the next property contiguous to it is one that we annexed. And so.
Oh, down, down railway.
Down railway, uh, down railway past it, so it seems to me that, uh, when we set it up, it's, uh, that is, uh, that became the responsibility of the city. When we annexed the property, uh, when we annexed both the post office and then the property next to the county, the next one. Then there's only county property and a county road between us, uh, our property. So therefore, I, I, you know, I hate to say it, but I think that became, that stretch became the responsibility of the city of Kingsbury. It's no longer the county, so I think if you went and asked the county to lay that.
Whoa.
They would probably say, no, we, but wait a minute, we, that's, you are on both sides of it, so you took over, just like Jones Road. We annexed both sides of Jones Road, therefore it became our responsibility.
Okay.
And I think that section is, I don't like to think that, and I wish the county would just do it, but.
The recent improvements in Jones Road, they did not talk to.
It's not Jones Road, Jackson Road and Brown Road, or, or both, Jones Road, it's only on one side.
Oh, okay.
But Jackson Road and Brown.
You had your improvements on Jones Road recently, and they didn't, tires and cities go all good.
Well, let me, let me, since we're hypothetically speaking, it's about stuff. Uh, New Berlin, their roads are crap because, right?
Yeah, apparently.
Or Santa Clara, is it Santa Clara, or is it both?
Uh, both.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did, because they annex both sides, or they, yeah?
Well, yeah, Santa Clara has a problem with big trucks.
And they don't, well, they don't have the funds to take care, upkeep their roads to what consider standards, safety, I don't know what the standard is.
Yeah.
But are even, are even, are they, are even we obligated to maintain a certain standard? Just because we surround the road on both sides, it's within, within our city limits, we never quoted ourselves as providing services. Road maintenance, water, uh, fire, and we didn't, we never, we never said that's part of our obligation as a city. It may be normally understood, but that doesn't, you know, we didn't, just like, if we have the no funds for it, we have no funds for it. It's just, that's the way your roads are now. I don't know, I mean, can they sue you for not maintaining your road? Because we never said we were gonna maintain the road.
Well, I, I think, uh, I don't think they could sue us for it, but they could complain, like the people in New Ber- Berlin. Went to the city, and the city in that case.
To the county.
They went, they, they made a mistake of annexing property or incorporating property on both sides of roads that they could not now afford to maintain. Now, I think they made a mistake, and we thought about it when we incorporated this city, of course, Kingsbury Road, all the way out. We originally considered going further out Kingsbury Road, and perhaps on both sides, but because of the expense, we looked at it and said, that's gonna cost.
We would have to have property tax.
That's fifteen-year-old, uh, numbers, or ten-year-old numbers, we thought it was gonna cost sixteen thousand dollars, uh, perhaps annually or every five years to do it. And so they didn't do it, New Berlin did, they incorporated on both sides, therefore now they found out, oh, we have to pay for that. And I, and I think that's basically what happens as we go down and incorporate or annex property on both sides of Kingsbury Road. We are acquiring a responsibility for whatever section it lies between our profit.
Cities. How far down Kingsbury Road are we right now? Are, are we on both sides of Kingsbury Road?
And spots.
You mentioned a minute ago.
And, and some spots.
Seriously, because if you come and bother, you weren't around.
Doesn't it go up to, uh, yours and, uh?
Lavoy?
And Lavoy, it goes all the way down.
The other side?
On the other side, it, it goes to, o- only goes.
The store.
Yeah, to the, to the.
Which is good, because right before, if you're coming south of Kingsbury Road, just before the store and the ditch, the drop off of pavement, not to mention that. Somebody's gonna hit the edge of that and go right into your store, is what it looks like, if we throw them into the store. And a half a years ago, that's how that garage door got taken, that's where it was post office, but just to, just comment. Good conversation, because I care of that.
It's like emancipation.
Uh, okay, so, yeah, that's just a, you know, when it comes to street maintenance, you know.
And we do have.
I just need to have something done, so I just, you know.
Okay.
Um, right now, um, our, our street maintenance has been fairly minimal. We haven't had a whole lot of pothole, you know, needs or anything, so, um, so. Any other, any other items on the budget?
Yeah. Because it's just the way life works, uh, expenses. Sorry, my eyesight, look, holy crap. City clerk compensation.
Yes.
The five thousand and thirty-three oh three, what is?
Let me see, city clerk compensation, oh, that, uh, thirty-three oh three, thirty-nine, that is what has, that's, that's the actuals.
Okay, from twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yes, to date.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
So yes, that column is the actuals.
Well, I've got the last two years, we budgeted twenty-four hundred, and I don't know what the actuals were.
For?
City clerk.
And I don't think we had anything for city clerk compensation.
No, we just said city clerk.
Yeah.
Well, it does say city clerk compensation.
There is, there is city clerk expenses.
No, it's the city clerk compensation, city clerk compensation for two years prior was twenty-four hundred.
Okay.
And. And the, oh, city clerk supplies was five hundred, five hundred, that's, it's always been five hundred supplies, and this was five hundred supplies.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Just kind of covers.
But our compensation went from twenty-four hundred to five thousand, I don't know why.
Um. I don't recall exactly, I think because.
I guess Melba got paid more than twenty-four hundred last year.
I don't think she did.
Well, it says we, we.
Yeah, this does not include Jessica.
No, it's not about, no.
Was it not basically?
It says three thousand, what's the three thousand, three oh three, isn't it?
That was from September last year to when I did these, yeah, I think that's, I think that's all Melba.
But it would, so I think five thousand is a good number to put on there, because.
It's an hour, they think it's hour.
More than twenty-four hundred.
The night's Christmas Eve.
Okay.
Three hours and six.
All right.
You know, it's an estimate, nobody's, nobody's saying you can't go over.
Yes, yes, it's an estimate, it's our budget.
So it's our, yeah.
It's, I just, you know, change so it's fair to lie.
It, it's a best guess.
That's fine.
I mean, certainly if it was like triple that or something, you know, we would have to, you know, kind of revisit, revisit that for sure, but. All right, any more items for discussion in budget?
Well, the festivals, I guess we can talk about that at the fall harvest meeting, right? Because we don't need to approve any of this stuff, since it's already on the budget.
It's already in the budget.
Cool.
We're still in the hearing, right?
And that's.
Yes, we're still in the hearing.
That's budget under Mesonland plans, or was it, it had a title to it, didn't it?
Which, which was what?
The fall harvest.
Yeah, it's festival sponsorship. It's on the, this page, next page.
Okay.
And next from the end there, first.
Okay. I have more questions.
All right, any, anybody have any further comments or questions about the proposed budget? All right, and at this point, we'll adjourn our public hearing and reconvene with our regular commission meeting. So item number five, check. So item number six, discuss and consider our fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four city budget.
I would, uh, ask that we approve the city budget as written.
Seconded motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve the budget, and second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, all right. Motion carries, item number seven, discuss and consider planning and zoning report. Uh, does Udo, or do you have a, uh, take?
Tyler.
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 When he said Tyler, threw me for a loop, I was like, oh, what is that?
I'm sorry, Tyler, I'm sorry. Um, so, uh, we met on the twelfth, um, let's see, the. The, we are an advisory committee, I, I don't know, uh, how much of this, I know that you all have it there in front of you. Um, I don't know how much of that we can go through word by word. Um, we know that the committee does things in commission, um, committee operates in the means of internal regulation. While commission services as an external review and decision of governance processes, um, we, uh. We, we basically gather the information, bring it to the commission, the commission makes the decisions, we vote, it happens. Um, right now, the, in the committee's report, the comprehensive planning, um, the comprehensive, comprehensive planning for small sects of cities. Um, from the Office for Community Affairs, Training and Educational Manual, uh, we were looking through that, um, at our last meeting. Uh, the manual does four things, it describes elements of comprehensive planning, suggests an organizational structure for developing and implementing a planning program. Describes the necessary procedures for growing up comprehensive plans, and summarizes the planning process step by step. Why plan, all too often residents of the community will express relief for planning only when they see changes that they perceive as detrimental occurring in the neighborhood. Um, forwardly development can help community of poor population growth, while preserving quality of life. Good planning saves city money by increasing the efficiency of decision-making. Small cities and towns that have incorporated planning into their city management practices provides elected officials and administrators a solid basis for policy decisions. While encouraging community residents to come involved in the process of city government, which is something that we would like to see more of. Um, which is community involvement, involvement. Um, Frank was gracious enough to offer to put together something for the night out, hopefully.
Hope so.
Um, uh, so that we can, uh, let more, let more of the community know that we're here and we're doing something.
Yeah.
Um, once the planning program is put in place, a variety of policy decisions can be made in a careful and rational manner. Uh, one of the main decisions governed by the planning concern is alternative uses of land. Subdivision of land for residential development is likewise guided by the comprehensive plan. The plan, in addition, guides the capital and progress portion of the city, of the city budget. Texas law authorizes cities to spend money for planning, if it does not require. That kind of leads us into, um. The planning consultants, um, the committee discussed the need for a professional consultant planner, and best method to approach the commissioner for funding. So, um, I kind of skipped over a few things here, just because it seemed relevant, um, to that section. We discussed, um, we discussed, hopefully talking to A and M, um, they, um, the master of urban planning. Um, you know, we're, we're doing our best, but we really, none of us, none of us are planning or zoning people. And so we really need to.
Not yet.
Get someone in that can help guide us to become what we need to be before, before they get here.
Oh, they're coming.
Yeah.
They might already be here.
So I think that, um, I think that, um, A and M, um. Maybe our best bet as far as paying for the buck, um, after that, we get into some private companies, private consultants, which, you know, that's gonna, that's gonna cost more.
Yeah.
Um, I am, I am standing in for eating this evening, um, I'm sure that she would have been a lot more well-spoken and, um, able to, uh. Um, I am, I am standing in for E this evening, um, I'm sure that she would have been a lot more well-spoken and, um, able to, uh...
No, you're doing a great job.
You are.
Okay, great, great.
Okay. Um, so with the, uh, for the statutes to give the city authority to adapt a comprehensive plan and to find the content and design the comprehensive plan. Any map of a comprehensive plan must contain a clearly visible statement that a comprehensive plan somehow constitutes any regulations or establishes any district boundaries. Um, we're, um, working to draft the Kingsbury Comprehensive Plan Scope Framework. The Scope Framework outlines the process for developing a comprehensive plan. Uh, plan kickoff, vision and plan framework, and comprehensive plan. Um, work in progress, project team organization chart, planning progress process chart. Um, the members are going to provide their input, edits, comments, suggestions, and concerns before the next monthly meeting, which is October tenth, to the community facilitator, which is the owner.
So who is, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Finish your, oh, um, who, uh, is contacting any of the consultants?
Eve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Um, she has, uh, called herself the committee, committee, committee facilitator.
Okay.
I feel like we probably need to, uh, at some point, um, committee advisor, committee chair, committee...
Committee chair, yeah.
Something, I think, and she needs to boost her title. She really is the driving force behind this committee, she's, uh, she's putting the work in for sure. Um, I think that she knows some people at A and M and the urban planning department, um, and so, uh...
I think maybe you could go to school and become a perfect planner, or a city planner.
Yeah.
I didn't know it was a doctorate or degree or, I don't know.
Yeah, degree. My question was...
When I grew up, I wanted to be a city planner, but I guess.
My quick question to the committee, uh, have you thought of coordinating with the county plan? Because they currently are, and that's part of the reason for saying Kyle, Kyle Kuchar is county commissioner.
Right.
And you'll hear them occasionally, whatever they would give the ED, a lot easier, sorry, judge, rather than commissioner, for different areas, different title. Uh, they are, my understanding, currently working on, uh, specifically traffic, which would include, I'm sure, Kingsbury Road. Because between the two and one twenty-three traffickers will go over the Kingsbury Road because of Texas one thirty and one twenty-three.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I know that, um, we...
Right now, I understand you're trying to get organizing, you know, getting people to talk about it.
Right, yeah, I know that, um, you know, we, we have to base a lot of what we're doing off of the county regulations because that's...
But, okay, what I'm saying is it's not a regulation, it is their planning, sort of like you are, you're putting out planning.
Right.
Then you turn it into an ordinance, well, so far, a decision may not have been made, which would be better to get it at that stage.
Right. In coordination. Which is why we're trying, which is why we're trying to, to figure out what we're doing, so that we can get this...
Yeah, how we can do it.
And order.
Yeah. We can get our plan, and then we'll see how close we come to what they want to do. But their, their plan is the same as our budget, it's a, it's a plan, there's nothing in stone about the plan.
Right, right.
They're, they're doing the same thing we're doing right now, they're asking everybody, what do you think is important? And, and they're just, they're just feeling their way around this right now, too. They're not trying to say anything in stone, but, because if they say it's stone, in five years from now, that stone will be turned over.
Yeah.
You know?
That's our, that's our, uh, that's our goal, is to try to get something in place...
Before the rules change.
Before, before the, you know, and, um, definitely, in the next five years, things are gonna change. In twenty-five years, it's gonna be completely different.
I mean, we know that, so, to be, um, you know, comes up twenty-four thirty-eight, twenty-four thirty-eight is their rule.
Yeah.
So, plans, plans are plans.
But I did not realize it came that far.
Oh, yeah. It comes right at twenty-four thirty-eight.
Yeah. So, um... What else have I got here? Um... Yeah, our next meeting is Tuesday, October tenth, at six thirty, right here, I invite all of you to attend.
May I suggest, I believe it's Santa Clara, it is the newest, most, newest, I'm not sure if you're living in this, but I'm just saying, they, Santa Clara Incorporated, ten fifteen years ago? So they've already cracked about two days?
Okay, yes, we, uh, we've been, uh, looking into, uh, Looing and Staples and out there, community, I'm Santa Clara.
Staples has a very well-defined, very well-defined...
Is it kind of right in the middle of all the expansions?
Yeah, and well, and luckily they did, because...
I mean, I don't know, they've made something.
That's great, yeah, we're definitely not trying to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
Um, and so, learning from other communities in our area.
I mean, I don't know, they might say, you know, maybe, yeah, here, you need this, and this, and we tried this, and this didn't work.
Right.
Well, I do know that Staples is, are big advocates for getting a plan in place, because they started getting taken over by creative developers, and they actually came to our city commission and was like, you guys need to come up with something, because you will have developers all over this place before you know it, and you're gonna have a problem. Because they don't care about water, they don't care about septic, they don't have a plan, those guys, they just want the money.
Yeah.
And then they're gonna leave us with a bunch of people who need help.
Mrs. Santa Clara, they are, they are, they're with shirts, I can't remember, sit-out shirts, so they, they...
Marion, yeah.
Yeah.
Brady. Has any of us actually made a contact with Staples so far? I mean, we are talking about it for like five, six months now, I haven't spoken to anybody in Seattle, stick you, Eddie.
No, I'm not sure.
Maria, nobody, right? So, the thing is, there is a lot of panic making here, like you're coming from two minutes ago, and then we are trying to figure out something, and meanwhile, I'm, I'm, I'm in the process of recession, I'm like, what the hell are we really doing there? We are meeting up every four weeks, we are making yada, yada, talk, talk, and, and nothing is really happening. You say, oh, yeah, we are, uh, uh, how did you put this two minutes ago? We will make the rules, you said, but we cannot make the rules, it is impossible for us to make the rules, the rules are already existing. So when I'm coming up with an idea, it is either, we cannot do that, we cannot do that, so I am standing at a point here in my life right now, I'm asking, what am I doing?
Well, we've, we've had the P and Z committee from Staples come and talk to us a couple of times, but we weren't at this point.
But we can absolutely, uh, Miles is, is the person that he stepped down as mayor for ten, so he could run the P and Z. And they would absolutely, I believe, they would absolutely attend a P and Z meeting and, and...
And tell you what they thought.
And provide whatever input, you know, and answer whatever questions and...
Would you be up for sending a joint, you know, maybe with the committee and, you know, as mayor, do them, just to see if you can get them?
Yeah.
That would be helpful, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, they were super knowledgeable.
Yeah, it is, I'm sure it is, yeah, we still...
Yeah, they've done it, and so...
Every four weeks, we hear you say, shit, sorry.
Ronnie Clark still, because he was here to present, Ronnie Clark?
He's still mayor.
He's still the mayor, okay. Would you want his business card, uh, have one?
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to, to Ronnie and to Miles and see if, if, that, if, uh, one or both can attend the next P and Z committee, which is, uh, October...
Yeah, starting from scratch.
Yeah, you're starting from scratch, it's not hard.
We are, we are sitting ducks, we are like, like chicken in a hen house.
Yeah.
No idea what we're doing by laying an egg.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's good to get, I think they're going in the right direction, but it definitely will help to get, kind of narrow the aisles and get...
It was, it was sure a good idea for Elena to come up with that video to show what we looked up six, eight weeks ago, uh, one oh one, this is what, what rings my bell, one oh one. Uh, there's not even a part, not even a snap of it, what's stuck in my brain. Uh, and then, there is the possibility, I go on the homepage of Staples, Little Berlin, or New Berlin, whatever they are called, this, this, this dingoish, or this, this wannabe English, what you're reading there. You're reading one sentence or the first sections of a sentence, section of a sentence, and after you are done reading, you have already forgotten what the first section was saying. This is impossible reading.
Oh, yeah, like any kind of, yeah.
It is, it is, you can probably hear the frustration, you know, like, no, this is a little, I, I'm sorry.
It looks like lawyers have been writing.
Yeah, of course, of course, I get it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you look at the Staples P and Z ordinance, it, it's ninety-eight pages long, and, but, you know, eighty percent of it is laying out the definitions of everything. Yeah, this is what a zoo is, this is what a miniature zoo is, this is what a golf course is, this is, you know, so it's, when you've kind of narrowed down that, then it gets into, okay, this is what an R-one residential is, you know? And then it kind of, and then, that's where you can apply, that, well, that's the zoning part of it. Um, so, it's, it, it, if you just look at it, you're like, oh my gosh, this is too much to wrap my head around, but it actually gets, uh, manageable if you realize that a lot of it is just the definitions, yeah. Udo, Udo doesn't look convinced. Okay, well, I'm gonna see about getting Ronnie and Miles to the next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
It needs to happen, and people could be already speculating on lands and planning on building, if you want to go this five hundred house, something or other here, that's gonna suck a lot of water out of our hanger for...
The ideas in your head are what's very important, the ideas we're just committing, the ideas which you come up with are very important. The little nuanced things, a little, all the little bits, pieces of information that goes, to, to, the idea is not important, but to the implementation it is. You say, well, nobody should, you know that nobody should have a, a tiger in their backyard. It's, well, you know it, but it doesn't say that, so, you have to kind of plan for it to some degree. It should be enough to say, you can't have wild animals, but maybe that's enough, maybe it's not.
A lot of it, you don't have to do because it's already in your existence.
But the idea that...
No, what, what we know, so why don't we go ahead and just copy the ideas of all the others, at least, and call it our idea? That would be the easiest way, but apparently that doesn't work, I don't know, hell.
I'd say get a copy of Staples's and read through it and see if some of it applies.
They have been down that road.
If it's, if it's, if it's easy for you, works for you, then it's fine. Personally, I don't like copying ideas, because that idea may be wrong, it may be wrong for the last five hundred years, but they just keep copying it.
It is not necessarily copying idea, Frank, it is, uh, uh, it's...
Aggressively.
Okay, okay, okay. Framework, not a...
Alright, so, uh, any more from your report? I will contact...
Thank you, Tyler.
I thought you just heard that bit up.
I will, I will, um, contact, um, Staples P and Z and see about them attending the next meeting, and I will let you and E know.
Right.
Would it be possible for them to perhaps send something that they could look at, so that they would, they would have some knowledge to actually have a good...
Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll see about that.
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea, we can go on the homepage, but I don't understand the word, I speak English, but I do not understand the words, that's, I don't like...
I'm not sure if that's English, or maybe it's...
Alright. Alright, any further discussion?
Alright, yeah, thank you guys.
Item number eight, discuss and consider House Bill one, uh, two one two seven, the so-called super preemption bill.
Yes.
Any further?
Uh, so to just give you guys some context here, uh, we felt like we wanted to make a statement, because some of the people in charge of Texas don't believe in conservative politics anymore, and they think that they can pick on big cities. But really, it affects all of us, so, you know, um, our independence as Kingsbury is threatened by that bill, and so we are writing a letter to support Houston saying, we don't believe in big government, get off our backs.
Yes, recently on the news as well, that Houston, big time news, not particularly, particularly...
And as a report to the, to the commission, uh, I'm a little slow, but I did just send off the, an email to the city attorney for Houston, and, uh, to Randy Zamora, who is the assistant city attorney. Mr. Zamora, it was nice to talk to you, my name is Sam Drugen, and I'm writing to you in my capacity as city attorney for the city of Kingsbury, Texas. The city of Kingsbury is a small class three city with a mayor and two city commissioners. The Kingsbury City Commission has voted unanimously to support the city of Houston's lawsuit involving the super preemption bill, House Bill twenty-one twenty-seven, and our city commission has asked me to offer our support and request permission from the city attorney of Houston to file an amicus brief on behalf of the city of Kingsbury, supporting your legal positions set forth in the petition on file in your court case. The city of Kingsbury is not a home-rule city, and so our legal capacities are not the same, but we nonetheless wish to show our support by filing such a brief. If the city attorney, if the Houston city attorney will accept our offer to file the brief, we will file it only after you have had an opportunity to review and approve the brief before it is filed. If that is agreeable, we would appreciate a copy of your plaintiff's original petition, and if you have any briefs, either for Houston or other amicus briefs. Copies of those briefs to assist us with preparing a draft brief to submit to you for review. Uh, thank you for your attention to this matter, and I look forward to your prompt response. So, uh, I expect that, uh, within a week, and I'll follow up with, uh, Mr. Zamora this week, and, uh, I hope that by next week, we'll have the documents from them showing what their lawsuit is, and then we can start writing our brief.
Oh, thank you.
Cool, yeah. Alright.
It was, I did, I meant to check with Jessica before I sent that, it was unanimous, when they voted for that one.
Alright, thank you, thank you for taking... Um, item number nine, discuss and consider food sovereignty act for Kingsbury.
Yes, um, so this is another one of mine, um, and I have some information finally, um, so to give you guys an update, because you have, uh, maybe don't know about, so I have been talking to the city commission about more food sovereignty, and how do we get that? Um, that's also why we're writing that amicus brief, uh, because we just feel like, you know, we want independence as a city, um, it's hard to get it without being a home-rule city. Uh, so I brought up this idea of trying for a PMA, which is a private membership association, a lot of people are kind of using it now to get around regulations that they believe are unfair. Um, we can't do it as a city, we can do it, but we'd have to dissolve the city. So, uh, so I think that Shane and I will probably pursue it, unless you guys vote that you want to dissolve the city, and we start with PMA instead.
Does that mean it cannot be held in city limits?
It can be held in city limits, yes.
But a separate organization must create it.
Yes, a separate organization must create it, and actually, we're gonna do another gate, gate on our property at the other side to kind of go into where the crate shop is. Um, so, because we have a nonprofit on that property, it also shouldn't occupy the same space as a nonprofit. So what if PMA gets its, uh, power from... So what a PMA gets its, uh, power from is privacy. Hence, it can't be a city, because the city has gone into contract with the federal government. When we became a city, we went into contract with the federal government and said, we'll allow you to be a boss, in other words. Um, so what a PMA does is it says, I am a private citizen, my rights come from the Constitution, and I am joining together with all of these other private citizens, and you do not have the right to, uh, to even look at my books, actually. Um, and definitely no regulation of, of, raw milk is fine, unloved eggs are great, uh, meat slaughtered at your farm, great, no worries. I even asked about, uh, uh, using bran strained septic and, um, you know, sort of gray water systems, and they said that was cool. Um, so I think we are gonna, you know, go ahead and pursue it, and we can have a membership club that can be a Kingsbury membership club, but it will have to be, you know... And actually, it can travel as well, because I said, can we have events in downtown Kingsbury? Yes. Um, just have to make sure everybody who's at the event eating all the raw cheese and stuff is a member of the club.
I know that application.
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah. So we're gonna get ourselves a country club.
There's ways, yeah. Well, it's just like in a direct county.
Uh-huh, yeah. And that's also the other thing we can do, serve alcohol without a liquor license, I guess, or something. There's some...
Oh, you're wrong.
Yeah, right.
He wants a membership card.
Are you building that?
The fire department has to have, uh, so many people when you do liquor, so many people you have to have, uh...
Probably over, well, twenty-five hundred, I think, is a, is a line for the county with, um, festivals and stuff.
But I don't know whether it's alcohol makes it a lower number that you have to have officers present.
Evidently, PMAs go straight to the federal, so county can't control you. Um, the other thing that the guy said was, which was super interesting, was sheriffs have a lot of land out here. So we need to get in good with our sheriffs and make sure they're not gonna, you know, they're, they're gonna love us and love what we're doing. Um, because they are higher than the FBI and they have more power than anybody else. And USDA, they have more power than USDA. So, yeah.
Well, your sheriff is pretty much God in this county.
So what is the next step?
So the next step is to continue talks, and I will, um, I, I sent him a series of questions, like all of those questions I just heard back. And, um, we'll keep on developing it. Um, we'll have to probably get another address at our place, and I'm happy to host it there because we can move it around Kingsbury too, as long as you're a card carrying member. You can, we could, we could gather at your place, we could, you know, gather anywhere, um, as long as we have the membership. So I'm gonna keep, uh, working on it. There's a fee involved, which, you know, I mean, if we're gonna, we'll have to figure out who's gonna be running it, but we'll, I'm happy to run it. But once other people wanna run it with us... What?
But it would be separate from the city of Kingsbury, so they can be dropped off.
Yes, it would have to be separate from the city of Kingsbury, so whoever, I mean, I'm hoping everybody in Kingsbury will join. And then we can kind of have basically a food sovereignty town as well as a city.
Can't use the same word.
Food sovereignty, uh, country club. That encompasses all of Kingsbury.
Well, so does that mean that this will drop off in a city?
Yes. But anybody who wants to get involved, um, with this PMA, I can, um, as I find out more and at least go further into it. Um, love to have more people involved with that.
All right, any further discussion? All right, item number ten, discuss and consider, uh, city and rainwater collection update. And this would be Tyler also?
I didn't call for it. I didn't call for it.
Okay. I think that was a, that was something we, we said add to the next from...
You do have some updates, right?
We don't, we don't, we don't have a, we really don't have an update, but Tyler didn't have time to get together with me. Now, we're, we're talking about, um, maybe on Thursday, there's a, uh, to actually sit down and write it up, a write-up demand application, but, or at least that's what I...
I did, um, I did speak with David about using, uh, the fire department. Um, his biggest concern is the insurance. Um, the fire depart, department is liable for anything that happens on this property to anyone on this property. Um, so, um... There are, you know, I, just in my head, I can think of a couple of things. Uh, flooding could be an insurance situation.
So we're concerned about anybody getting hurt on a second seat.
Yeah.
We're concerned about, like, getting hurt. That's one of the things, and anything that could happen when we were attached to the building, against people on there. We're not simply opposed to it.
Right.
But we just want to make sure that, you know, just some liability coverage there.
Right, yeah, right, absolutely.
For our insurance, because we made a fortune already.
Yeah.
We really can't afford... Anyone has a rider, we have to be separate. Anything within the world, all we have to do is, um, well, policy, a rider to do that. And I'm not sure what all needs to be covered. It's just mainly sort of, like, if somebody doesn't get hurt.
Exactly.
If you're out there, and let's say you're helping water around and stringing that.
Yeah, yeah. No, I get, I get that.
We would have been, you know, if you don't mind, what can I get?
Yeah.
We would likely come back and give us a little more information, presentation at the department.
Okay.
You know, what all you think is involved in it.
Right.
I mean, somebody said something about a forty thousand gallon tank.
Um, I, I was originally looking at a sixty thousand gallon tank. Um, it's a big engine.
Yes, yeah, it's, uh, the one, uh...
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're talking about. Uh, this, this building is seventy-two hundred square feet. Um, Shane thought that it was fifty-four hundred. So my map was a little off, a little low. Um, with seventy-two hundred square feet, um, that is, give or take, a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and four gallons a year. Um, based on, um...
Not based on the past couple of months.
That, that is per, that is per year. Uh, Kingsbury averages thirty-six inches per year. Um, and so...
Well, and that's the thing about having a lot of storage capacity so that during these dry months, yeah.
Right, so the, the, the worst thing you can do is nothing. Um, the, the best that you can do is your storage capacity is, you know... Um, and even if we, you know, in order to collect off of the entire roof, we would need to connect all of the downspouts underground to the tank. So if we, you know, a sixty, sixty thousand gallon tank from Plastic Mark, for example, is a thirty-nine foot diameter, um, eighteen feet, eight inches tall. It runs, at last glance, forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
And that's something that goes ground.
No, 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 it does not. Yes, it is, it is above ground. That's a galvanized steel tank. Um, and that is just the tank. That doesn't include the pad or the plumbing or the pump or the filters or any of that cool chat. Um, if, you know, if we're capable of collecting a hundred and sixty thousand gallons, a sixty thousand gallon tank would probably be full most all of the time if we were collecting off the entire roof. Now, David mentioned that in, just thinking about it as quickly as we were thinking about it in the moment, that out where that tree is might be the best place for a tank. Um, and, you know, if we, if we needed to start smaller, we could certainly start smaller. The worst thing you can do is nothing at all, right? So, um, if we were collecting off of half of the roof, it would only be supplying gutters from half of the roof. So it's less digging, less pipe work. Um, and then, uh... My original, uh, thought was a, uh, a window serve, um, water machine. And so, uh, David was mentioning that, talking about bringing in some storage units, some sheds for, you know, with larger scale when the pavilion builds, point of storage says...
We shift everything to the back of the space and all of them.
Right.
And, you know, everything we're doing out here, like our log, you know, stuff, slide it around this way.
Right.
And incorporate our comics or, uh, some buildings out here and just shift around.
Right, okay. Um, if, if there was a, because there is power there already. Um, I think that on the south side of the drive here, um, especially if, if y'all's plan is to rotate everything back to the back, there's a lot of asphalt right out here that could be just off-road, uh, facility for, uh, water dispenser. Um, and I think that that would require, I don't know if the driveway, um, into the station, I don't know if the edge of the concrete is where the easement starts. I don't know if that asphalt is part of the, um, road easement. I, I, I don't know, but, uh, I, I would think that cutting, cutting a line from the north side of the property where the tank would be, in theory, across to the south side, um, to lay that pipe work into a spot that's further from the bay doors, not gonna have traffic in front of the bay doors. You know, further from what's going on as it shifts. Um, so I, I feel like that might be a good spot, uh, if it just involves, you know...
It just depends on how quickly we move. I don't know, we have set any kind of timeframe.
Sure, yeah. And I think that, I think that if we can, if we can try to work together with all of that, obviously, nobody wants to get in the way of progress, right? Uh, so... It would be good, anyway.
Progress, water availability to the fire department.
Yeah.
Progress.
Um, and so, you know, I think that, um, with the, with a pay station, um, you know, the funds that are generated, um, would hopefully cover the, you know, the cost of maintenance. Um, and then, anything above that, I would think, uh, would somehow need to go, at least a portion of it would need to go back to the fire department. Yeah, well, I mean, for use of the property, um, you know, I can't, you know?
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. How it works legally with...
It sounds like a lease in general, it's a lease from the owner. Uh, and typically in those leases, of course, you would have separate operations. It's, this is not, uh, KVFD is not a absentee owner who's just renting out his property. It has operations. But in that lease, uh, typically you would put in provisions that say, uh, with respect to operations that you're conducting, if it's the city of Kingsbury on, uh, the owner's property, the city of Kingsbury has to have insurance to pay for somebody falling off the roof while you... And this is a lease of the roof space to collect water and a lease of area to do other operations. And you would just say, the city of Kingsbury is responsible for maintaining insurance, in which it's, the, the lost payee is both the, uh, city and the KVFD. So the KVFD is insured by the city's policy for specific accidents or operations and injuries that occur. And so if, if somebody fell off the roof while they were constructing or operating this, but it had nothing to do with the fire department, then, uh, the personal injury lawyer would show up and make a demand on everybody, the city and KVFD. And at that point KVFD has to say, well, under your lease, you are obligated to defend us, provide us with a defense. Get us a law firm and, uh, either to adjust it and settle the claim or defend it. So those are standard kinds of provisions that, uh, if, if all the parties agree on all other terms, uh, I'm sure that those would be a standard part of that lease agreement.
That lease came up in our discussions. That's, that's why for both of us, you know, if there was a lease involved. Unfortunately, you know, you have something with that.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
No, it's always fair.
Handshake, if you're looking.
Right.
It sounds like we...
Um, it sounds like we're on the same track. Yeah, yeah. And so as far as, you know, what size, how much, you know, it's really, it's really about how much can we? It's not, um...
It's avoiding doing nothing.
Yeah. So, um, you know, maybe it starts with just collecting it and see, you know, get the tank going. Let's see how, what it looks like when it's full.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, if, I, I, I would still, I would still like to see some sort of tote, you know, a non-potable, um, filter as well, um, for livestock. Um, it's cleaner than pond water.
Yep, yep.
So, you know, in the, in the case of an emergency, it, you, you wouldn't need electricity to power a pump to get that water into a tote. Um, it would be ground effect. Um, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't necessarily be potable, but it would keep your animals alive through the freeze. Um, and I know that that was one of the biggest concerns was, you know, keeping the animals alive. Um, but then, uh, with this, with this window bin type scenario, all of the filtration is on demand. So we're not storing potable water. We're storing rainwater, and then it is filtered on demand. And...
I'm really torn between a bigger home and several smaller ones in case of catastrophic failure.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I'm just throwing that out there. I really, you've obviously done a lot more research, but, I mean, I, I see the big one, like, yeah, that's great, but I, mm, look at it.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, no, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot.
Well, when you do your plumbing, like, you make your options there, whether you can...
Yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's, it's, it's very easy to, you know, extend to multiple tanks.
But it's, it's...
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's fantastic.
It's needed.
We're definitely interested.
Okay.
We wanna know, like I said, we'd like for you guys to come up and make a presentation.
Yeah.
And, you know, so that it's clear in our mind, you know, what we're looking at, sure what the options are, and what, what we're gonna be expected, respected with, and, you know, that kind of stuff.
Okay, all right. Well, Sam and I are gonna meet on Thursday, and...
Our business meeting is the first Thursday of every month.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Item number eleven, discuss and consider, uh, discussion of SB twenty-thirty-eight. This is the release, uh, by petition from, uh, an ETJ. Um, I submitted my petition on September first, the first day that the law took effect. And I'm looking at Seguin City Council agenda for tomorrow. A resolution of the City Council of Seguin, access accepting the petitions for release from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction filed by Shirley Nolan and Lottie Nolan uh, for four properties in section three, uh, of land along County Road two-thirty, which is... Uh, of land along County Road two thirty, which is. Um, and granting the request for release effective, uh.
They have to.
They have to. It's required. Uh, of the passing of this resolution. Andy Quitner, signed Andy Quitner, interim city attorney. There's also a, uh, filed by petition for release from city's extraterritorial jurisdiction filed by Flying Bar D Ranch, listed. Uh, it doesn't say where that is. I mean, the fly, there's the flying J. Yeah, but it's not the bar D. Uh, I'm not sure where, where that is, but, um, so, uh, yeah. So, uh, our expectation was that they would wait the forty-five days and then it would just become effective and not, not make any movement on it. Apparently they are going to go ahead and make movement. I will be there.
Excellent.
Great.
Sure.
Yeah, just, uh.
When, when is, when do you have to?
Council meeting?
Uh, city council meeting tomorrow. There is, uh, with the second, fourth, Tuesday is tomorrow.
You don't have to be there.
I don't have to be there.
No, but you'd be great.
So, is the city of Kingsbury gonna provide pre-printed petitions for people to pick up?
Uh.
Turn in?
Yeah. But this, like we said, this was kind of a, yeah, yeah, kind of a test run to see what the, and so, yeah. Given tomorrow, hopefully, um, we don't, uh, receive any more flat for this.
The test is not over yet.
No, it is not over yet. Let's not start passing out cigars. Yeah.
Four properties.
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, it is, actually it is. It, it is the, yeah, it is four properties. It is the, uh, Reloist Center, which is those three, you know, the fat chance and the old store. It's the empty lot, sale post office, and it's the shed, the hair salon. So it is four properties. Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, um, it was, um, and then Jessica and I kinda worked on.
You guys did a deal, sure.
Uh, I, I gave her a, a petition and, and, uh.
Available but not pushing to avoid liability.
No, no, we'll push it. No, uh, the petitions will be. Yeah. We just wanted to, we just wanted to, uh, uh, to go through the process at least once and, and see how it goes. And that, that is the last item on their agenda for, for that day.
Is it executive session?
Uh, after, it is the last thing, um, Texas, yeah. Then they have a closed session after, but it doesn't say, you know, what it's pertaining to. Uh, contemplated litigation. So.
Now, wait a minute.
What was that?
What was that?
That in their closed session, it's, it's deliberate, deliberate contemplated litigation in accordance with section five-five-one of seven-one of the Texas government code.
Is that, is that?
They just gotta do city attorney, like, they had a city attorney and he was only there like a couple of months. And then he went to San Marcos and so Quitner came back again. And now they just hired another city attorney like a couple of weeks ago or something, so.
Yeah, but you mentioned Andy Quitner. I was just gonna say, congratulations. Nobody's ever gotten Andy Quitner to do anything.
Yeah. Let's not start hitting out cigars.
Then all of a sudden you say executive session and contemplated litigation. I wonder if they're gonna pull, lay it out there and then tell the city council, okay, this is why. I, I don't know, but why put contemplated litigation? Unless they're just gonna talk about the, the effect on our lawsuit against Seguin. It may be referring to the city's lawsuit against.
Or maybe something entirely different.
But it doesn't matter, cause they wouldn't let you and I in there to say.
It's contemplated litigation.
We just put that little camera up there.
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, so, this again is just coming to, to go through the process at least once and see, uh, because again, this is a brand-new law. Uh, we'll, we'll see how it, how it, uh, goes here between the Flying Bar D and Shirley and Lottie Nolan.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Your, your four properties that you petitioned to be released from Seguin's ETJ have been, um, God, man, I hate this. Uh, you petitioned Kingsbury to.
They have been voluntary annexed.
They've been voluntary annexed. So.
But then.
To be released from Seguin's ETJ, does it, does that law automatically kick you back into unincorporated?
I don't know.
I think it does.
I don't know. I just know it means out of their ETJ.
You're out of ETJ, you become unincorpor, you become part of unincorporated.
Uh, we can.
No, this is only with respect to Seguin's claim that you need a release from Seguin's ETJ.
Because.
Now, nobody knows what the effect of that same, that is also annexed and it is claimed by the city of Kingsbury as its jurisdiction. Nobody knows what the courts are gonna say about that.
Despite, yeah, despite agreements, uh, between Kingsbury and Seguin and mayor and mayor, once the, um, chief engineer at County Road and Bridge said that all of our voluntary annexations in the Seguin ETJ were, what was the word? Basically, you know, yeah.
Not valid?
Yeah.
Not valid?
Potentially, it, under, you know, questionable. Um, then, uh, then they consider, County Road and Bridge considers all, including the fire station, back in the Seguin ETJ. So all I'm doing here is requesting removal from the ETJ per this brand-new law.
Okay.
So, how we go from here? Yeah, we're sitting in the Seguin ETJ again.
Until tomorrow?
Yeah.
But she's still in the Kingsbury jurisdiction, the annexed property. And she's not, she's not in the, uh, Kingsbury ETJ. Uh, she is in the city, in the city's, uh, at least that's our claim.
Yeah.
Who knows what the court sees.
But if, if released from Seguin's ETJ, we still honor their request to be part of Kingsbury.
Right. If we have to go through voluntary annexation, again, I have to, you know, make.
That's a possibility and that's a big deal.
Yeah. And of course, all the properties between, you know, mine and the undisputed city limits would have to also be released from the ETJ. So we're, you know, what, this is first step and.
Pretty much everybody's petition for voluntary annexation.
And if we make a resolution saying, you know.
Release of Seguin's ETJ.
That it's retroactive, then, you know, maybe that's what we do.
Line Bar D Ranch, listed.
Where's that at? Let's see.
Thirteen-six-eight-nine, time seven-twenty-five.
Seven-twenty-five?
Out, from La Queeny to.
Yeah.
I've seen Flying Bar Ranch D, I've, I've seen it.
I have not.
I knew it.
So it's over in La Queeny. Well, I don't.
Almost.
It says, it says the Gino, seven-eight-one-five-five.
It's like Ramo doesn't exist. It's the Gino.
Ella and Nor.
Yeah, seven-twenty-five, isn't that like almost, kind of towards almost?
Kind of like, it's kind of New Berlin.
Is it?
I think. It runs there on New Berlin. Seven-seventy-five?
Seven-twenty-five goes up to the Bronco.
So. Yeah, so the, yeah, so the process was, yeah. I, uh, in, you know, I took my stuff to city hall in Seguin, asked for the, asked for the city clerk and they said, well, we don't have a city clerk. So, okay. City secretary, um, what, she was just willing to take my papers. I said, please, I would like to see, can you, can you stamp them received? I didn't want them to disappear. Um, so, um, she stamped them, uh, received. Um, and I asked for a copy of it and so she made, made a copy of it. Afterwards, I realized that she stamped it received and it says bye and there was no, she didn't sign that it, it. But, but apparently with her. It's what?
She didn't put her name on it?
Mm-mm. No. And I didn't think to, 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 I just know that she stamped it, you know, September first. So I didn't think to ask, ask her to at least initial it or something. But, um, uh, so it was, you know, I, I, she was, she did not seem thrilled about, but, uh.
But she wasn't hostile?
No, 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 not at all.
Another day at work.
Yeah, another day at work. So apparently from that process, it did, it did make it through.
And it made it to the agenda so that there's no further issue about her name not being on.
No, apparently not. I, I, well, again, we'll see tomorrow on, on January. Um, so, yeah. Once we get through tomorrow, then we can, and it's a done deal, then we can see about the fire station again and the people going this way again and people on that side of the tracks again and, you know, up the road again.
You gotta go through more.
And, and the people that, and like, uh, Jessica and Tyler that have not.
At all been by the road.
Right. That have not been able to voluntary annex, cause they weren't touching. They can also file to be removed from the ETJ.
If you're removed from the ETJ, can you, can you then be a part of Kingsbury if it's not touching or?
No. No, no, no. This is just removal from the ETJ. Touchy feely, we're touchy feely town. The common thought process is that the state will eventually do away with ETJs altogether. So this is the first step in that. But, you know, that's somewhere in the future and may or may not be the case, but that's.
City cop law six-twenty-two, six-twenty-three mile mark running gray line.
Yeah, city, Seguin, city of Seguin is out there on the.
That's crazy.
Friends.
They want the same side and don't track.
Wow.
They can chase they can do, but they can't start, you have to start the chase in there. In other words, they wanna be just like someone.
Do we even plan on making, giving assistance, obtaining a petition and filing?
Sure, yes, sure.
Of course, Kingsbury is treating Seguin, man, I imagine this too.
Yeah.
Years ago, red line district.
Because it's, it's just as, you know, uh, uh, scary a process as anything, you know, so it's not, I mean, we're kind of used to dealing with this, but for the average person, you know, it's a little daunting, I would think.
You don't know the specifics.
You know, getting something notarized and filing it, you know.
Rich.
Wealthy.
So.
The red light district on the.
Potentially.
Yeah, they could, they could be, they could request to be released from our ETJ. Right. We have not received anything along their lines, but sure. Sure.
I don't know why they would.
I don't either, but, you know.
The seller was a speed trap that's I-25.
All right. Any further discussion on this? I will report back.
Yeah, great.
All right. Item number twelve, discussing consider, train crossing at Gander Slough Road. I contacted UP to Raquel Espinosa, who is the, um, customer relations or the community relations person for our area. Uh, she has been on vacay and has not, uh, in her, uh, she does not list a date when she will return. So I will continue to call and until I'm able to reach her.
You gotta tell her her number?
For her, for Rachel.
Well, we start calling her and you message.
You bet, you bet.
That's what we do, I mean. It's phone service work, let's get it to her.
Yeah. Raquel Espinosa. She is the, there are several, uh, districts.
Where Raquel's gonna get back from vacation.
Yeah, she is the, uh.
Phone calls from Kingsbury.
Public relation she is.
Yes, her community relations.
Community relations.
Yeah. Um, yeah, she does not, in her voicemail greeting, she does not say when she is returning.
Probably spam, spam.
Yeah.
Uh, it's coming up. Um. Okay. I'll get that in just a second as soon as it comes up. Uh-oh, there we go. Um, communities. Contact us. And general public, local and community contact, public affairs contacts. That's what I was looking for. There you go. Uh, she is for New Mexico and South and West Texas. Raquel Espinosa, senior director, public affairs, San Antonio. Her phone is two-one-zero, two-oh-oh, thirty-six, fifty-six. And you can also send an email to her.
What, what, what side of New York?
Union Pacific. All right. Um, item number thirteen, discussing consider, CECO grants to retrofit municipal buildings with high-efficiency LED lighting.
So, yeah, I've done some work on this grant. I call, I met up with, well, Tyler and I met up with David to talk about, um, lighting. His main concern was since the city doesn't own this building, the fire department does, can we get money as a municipality?
Can we dispense money that goes to something that lives in the city?
Right. Yeah. I mean, since it's not technically the city's.
So I'd say that grant will probably tell you. You can call the people too.
Yeah.
I sent an email that nobody has responded, but I, I'll, I'll give them a call. That grant is due on the twenty-second, so there's only a few more days to send it in. Um, anyway, I can just, yeah. I figure, I, I've gathered enough information, I could just fill it out and send it and if they reject it, then.
Yeah.
Why not?
I would say doing nothing is a long journey to do.
Because they won't give the money away, they've got to give it.
Yeah.
And this is a small city, very small city. This is power fire department, it's a volunteer fire department. It's, you know.
Right.
It still serves the people of Kingsbury though, so doesn't that make it municipal?
It's, it's not, it doesn't have to be a municipal thing. It serves the citizens of Kingsbury.
Yeah.
You know? It's a volunteer department, but we support it, we have to, we want to.
We want you to.
Yes. Yes.
But it's, yeah, as they say, knows it, wants it, tell them.
Yeah.
I think, I think it'll be, I think it'll be just fine.
Go girl, go girl, do it, do it, do it, do it, thank you.
Just say it. Wait a minute, say something about a boat there, why?
That's only a. All right. Um, item number fourteen, discussing consider, Clifford money designation.
Okay, so, um, I asked to have this on here just cause I kinda wanna push us. Winter is coming and it's supposed to be a bad one. We probably are not gonna have any water stuff in place, but I just like to remind people that even though it says we don't even have to have a plan until twenty twenty-four, I would like to see a plan as soon as humanly possible. If we lose power again this year and we don't have water and, you know, Tyler's thing can't happen yet cause we don't have the, I mean, it's just, I'd like to kinda get moving on it and we do have thirty-four grand that was awarded to us for water cause the people of the city of Kingsbury came and said, we want water, some kind of water for our animals, some kind of. So I know that, you know, we don't have to get a plan together until twenty twenty-five, but I would push us to get a plan together now.
Yes.
Now's the time.
Yep.
So, um, for the Clifford grant, which they all decided to use for water. And then I'd also like to say, can we use, can, since Tyler has come up with a plan for water that is better than.
It was water or?
Just heating and cooling and water.
Well, we also liked the building.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the kind of where I'm hoping we're headed still.
The building?
On the real estate, place to put a building and drill a well and.
Yeah.
And have generated power and...
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still thinking that, because I mean, Tyler has this rainwater plan that also is gonna take a bunch of money, and it's, it's the same idea, I'm just wondering if we could take the money and put it towards the rainwater collection, because this is a building and we're thinking about doing it here first with permission.
And we could have a building that we're not leasing, if we have a building that is exclusively ours, if we have a building where we could have, uh, standby electricity generated...
For thirty-four thousand dollars somehow?
Uh, if we can have a, a property where we can drill a well, good well, and produce water, uh, and have it boost our electricity to pump it, I really like that, I really like that. I mean, because neither one of these, neither one of these projects is gonna be done for thirty-four thousand, but I think that the, everything we're doing is long, everything you look at is long term, we always look at long term, because we can't do anything in one week, one day, one year.
So, you're still against the idea of somehow getting property, which we might be able to annex through?
If we can, if we can obtain a piece of property somewhere or somehow, uh, that we can potentially put a building on, you know...
Taking over one of those paper streets to put the well on.
We could put a building, we have money, we could drill a well, we have money, we could buy the generator for electricity, and we could probably even buy some furniture for the building.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm pushing us to make some decisions on this because it would really be dumb if we lost power again this winter and everybody's out of water and out of, you know, problems for their animals, and we have this money sitting around that, you know, I just kind of want to put a little fire under us.
Action, action is great, no, action is good, right? No action is the worst thing you can do. And I, I'm always in the back of my mind going, what is, what is the deadline of these? I know it's there, and I never can remember it, but just write plain simple black and white, twenty-four, twenty-five, that's it, that's it.
I'm gonna try to... We didn't have our wells because we didn't have power. We happen to have a brother, a boy and son who got around that problem, he's in his, welding generator, and so perhaps the city of Kingsbury could look into maybe getting a very healthy generator, they could be applying some of the well in the event of the emergency, I wouldn't, we won't have another one like that, um, for a while, but just keep that in the back of your mind, because even that generator could be applied to...
Mobile generator, incidentally.
Right, 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 yeah, um, yes, we're talking gravity feed, I'm, that is the best, but if you need to deal with pump, you've got a generator, so perhaps, I'm just suggesting, perhaps maybe some of the funds, you might go that way.
We, we actually had talked about a gen, a kind of a package between a well, a city well, and a generator, and then possibly a building, but we don't have enough money for that, but some kind of, you know, heating, cooling space that is separate from the grid, you know, maybe with some kind of liquid propane combo generator thing, and then a well.
I'm sorry, I'm behind the times, uh, what has come out of, uh, the street?
The paper street?
Yeah, what has come out of the city of Kingsbury trying to acquire a paper street?
Well, that's Shirley's, we were talking about it, I don't know what...
We've been trying to acquire properties on the open market too.
Right, but, like I say, I'm behind the times, I know that it started, how did it progress?
It is, uh, still sitting there, uh, it is, as far, it's really, we're talking about Summit Street because Guadalupe Street is, um, uh, is still, it, it does provide access to at least one residence off that street, Summit Street does not.
Right, yes.
So, it is...
And it's close to downtown.
Yeah. Uh, all it's, it's got three nice oak trees on it, that's about it. So, it, it is, uh, it is, uh, according to the county attorney and I believe Sam and, and Art, you know, piped in, it's, it would be a matter of, uh, deed without warranty, uh, because it is, I talked to Seidenberger, uh, the commissioner on that, and it's, he's like, well, that's not in the county, that's in the city, uh, so it's not a county issue, it would be a deed without warranty to, to include that property.
Is it affected by the ETJ?
Well, no, it is. It would be in the questionable, uh...
So, as soon as you figure out the other, then it would be back to, okay, thank you, that's all that, that closes my open loop.
So, I, so I guess if, if, if we're thinking we want to own the well, we want to own it on land that we own and a generator, then I would, uh, request as a city commissioner that maybe we at least move forward with trying to get that paper street lined up so that we can start making moves.
I'm in agreement with their suggestion, we move forward, they start making steps that direction.
Yeah.
And one more pitch for this plan to succeed, because we have everybody thinking this, this should, something should happen, I saw your list, uh, the email, where I can't, yes, sir. And I said, and that, that piece of property has a few oak trees on it, and if we were really, really, really careful about how much space we use, we could put a little park for our little town, you know, a little playground, a little park, I mean, something, a green space.
There, there you will have an emergency valve.
And that's, if, if you need, yeah, if freezes hell freezes over and you need water, we're gonna have water.
If I can make a...
You need to charge your cellphone.
If I can make a suggestion as a mechanical engineer...
Yes, sir.
Do go for propane generator, do not go for gasoline.
No, we're, propane is the way, yeah, propane and then electric, you know, collective electricity.
If you run out of water, get with me, I got a well, I got a generator, all my neighbors, you all have generator, so, I mean, we, we were prepared.
That's, that's, yeah, yeah, hopefully, you know, as many people as possible.
I'm, I'm, I'm drawing some water, do it, I, I'm...
Yeah, I mean, as far as that, as far as paper street, you know, that one, we would, we would have to do the deed without warranty before we do remove it from ETJ, I guess, because it's not owned by...
Well, you're talking about it being deeded to the city?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, then, yes, you, you'd have to do that before you, uh, and I'm trying to think if, uh, when that statute, if it applies to...
No order to petition, yeah.
I mean, the statute says if the landowner, like you and Laddie, uh, asked for, uh, the annex, I mean, to release of the ETJ, I'm trying to remember if the statute said that the city could do that, I mean, I, it's, that, that, that paper street is in the Sagan ETJ right now, so, yes...
According to Roden Bridge.
According to Roden Bridge, and, uh...
But then Seidenberger...
So, then we get the, a deed to it, it's still, uh, and then it's, it's still in the ETJ of Sagan, so the question then is, can the city of Kingsbury, after it has a deed, then file an application?
Yeah.
And, and, well, because I don't know, remember if the statute said that the city could do this? If the statute, remember, could contemplate if people, private landowners getting a release of their land from an ETJ, uh, the, the, the...
One other thing, the City Act, another city.
The laws of Texas do not recognize, uh, a city of Kingsbury having property in, uh, another, well, I don't...
The city, a city can own property?
Yes.
County can own property, right?
So, I think the statute says landowner, so, and we own the land.
We are, we are a league of city, we're not, I mean, we're not a human, but we are, if I can incorporate, reincorporate.
So, we'll, we'll just do one and do the same thing that Shirley did, and then the property is out of their, uh, ETJ, and then the city can go on and do whatever, you can drill a well, and I, I think that, I mean, if you can drill a well, it's feasible, but I, we're assuming...
There was one right next door.
So, I think, yeah, with all this...
But I think when you drill a well, you're supposed to be fifty feet, your well's supposed to be fifty feet from the adjoining landowner, uh, your neighbor, and so, uh, uh, what, we're only gonna have fifty or seventy feet across there, isn't it, or is it only thirty feet across there?
Oh, it's bigger than thirty, yeah.
It's thirty, it's not fifty feet, if not sixty or seventy, but even then, if you put it right in the middle, it, there are two landowners, and I don't know that you can drill, drill a well.
The concern, I think, my fear is as far as a well, because the well has to be exactly fifty feet from a septic field and a hundred feet from a...
I didn't know about property lines.
Yeah, I don't know about property.
Oh, yeah, because my, uh, well, I'm just going by what Mr. DeHardy told me when I drilled mine, and he said, I, I said, well, this is generally where I want to drill it, and he said, well, are you a hundred feet from that septic? And I said, yes, you're, this is exactly a hundred feet from my septic, and then he said, well, there's a fence over here, that's your neighbor, and I said, yes, and he said, you have to be fifty feet from your neighbor's property.
That's what he told me.
If your neighbor can put a septic system there, it's part of what they...
So, that's something to, to consider, yeah, definitely, I did...
And that's a question of feasibility, I mean, Mr. DeHardy could tell you that, and it may be that, and it may be that once you're inside city platted lots, there are different rules, because I remember Cecil, uh, Cecil Ricketts right over here.
That across from Baptist Church.
Uh, and, uh, I think he told me, or somebody told me, that, uh, one of his neighbors, uh, his well went dry, so Cecil went over there and he walked it with his, uh, water witcher, and he went to the other side of the guy's lot and said, okay, you can drill a well, there's a, and I think he did that, uh, and that, I don't know what size of a lot that it was, but it sounds to me like there might be a different rule for a platted lot than there is out on my thirty-eight.
Yeah, I don't understand, I don't know what, how new the rules are, it's loopy, uh, it's on a train, down and down on railway, she has a well, and that was part of, you know, part of her issue with crystal clear, you know, she's a, it's a liquid servicer, but she has a will.
Well, then, if there's a will, there's a way, and I, we could probably do it, I just raised the question, now, that lot is only three hundred feet by sixty...
Probably sixty, seventy-five.
So, it's probably worth a phone call to DeHardy too, and just see if...
Yeah, at least ask him.
At least, yeah, check to see what they're gonna do.
There's always a way, there's always a way.
I don't know, I have a dumb question, that parking lot up front of the, of your general store here in Kingsbury?
Yeah.
Where the market is on, I don't know, who owns that, is it not possible to drill the public well there right off the parking lot, because it is supposed to be for the...
There used to be one there.
Yeah, you should find it, find it.
There used to be a big, but there used to be a cistern and a windmill there, the rail...
That'd be really cool, right down there.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody has access there, you can bring your trailer with your tow, you pump your couple of hundred gallons of water, what you need, and you put a little, little generator across there for the...
The county well was, and once you crystal cleared...
We can sing all together, but we can speak single.
Parking, kind of the store actually is the road, is it right?
Yeah.
Although, if we're gonna try to keep it off grid, uh, you know, you'd have to figure out where to put the generator over there.
Yeah, well, this is, we got, we got the idea, it's moving forward, like, it's moving forward, if we can.
Okay, um, all right, so, yeah, we'll, we'll...
Clever.
Put that back on the front burner, it's been kind of on the back burner. All right, item number fifteen, we'll recess our regular commission meeting and enter into executive session, which means that we have to kick everybody out, because we have no separate chambers to, to adjourn to.
We all have to listen.
Pretty hard for us to do that.
Yay, thank you, guys.
I'm sorry, just, guys, we're too much.
Why you apologize to me?
Well, because...
Well, because I have to, right down...